It is 5:30. We will get the regular city council meeting for the City of International Falls to order. If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will go to the agenda. Right now, I, we don't have any official additions, but I did speak with Councilor Wegner. He would like to add number 12, discussion of the boulevards on the Highway 53 corridor. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Councilor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Were you going to add the itinerant restaurant out of land use?
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. We did get a restaurant license, a dinner license for Jack Pine Family Diner LLC. So at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to add that, that license to the agenda as well.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we gotta finish the first one.
We got the motion second.
And we don't know who's all, we're not gonna know who's here today either. You didn't do roll call.
You don't know that you're here?
No, I know that I'm here, but what about the other people?
Fair enough. Okay.
Slow down.
Yeah, slow down. I was so excited. I was so excited. All right, here we go. We have a motion to add an addition to the, to the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to amend that and add this Jack Pine Family Diner LLC to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to see them separate. Because I think there's some discussion we should have on the first motion, so 53.
Okay.
Or we can have that discussion right now if you want.
Okay, let, let, okay.
You wanna start over?
We're, we're starting over. That never even happened?
Yep. That's why, yeah.
Thank you for all for pledging allegiance to the flag with me. I'll call this meeting to order. Right now, we have a roll call. If you notice, all of the city councilors are present. At this time, I have been asked to add an agenda item. So if we could add a discussion of the boulevards on Highway 53 first, Chair would entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. So this is only to add this to the agenda. Any discussion? Please.
I'd like to see it go to Public Works Committee first before we act on here. You can have a recommendation through the Public Works Committee.
Okay, so my, my-
That's next week.
Yep, so my que, my question is just having the discussion, do you think the discussion needs to go to Public Works first?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and would Public Works be able to bring their, their recommendation, their conversation to the Committee of the Whole following, so the whole council can have that discussion later?
Yes, can do that, right. Ted?
Ted?
Okay, yeah.
So, are you okay with that as well?
No, I'm ready for this motion to move ahead.
All right.
Yep.
So the Chair would entertain, or the Chair at this time would call any other discussion. So I will call the question on moving the addition to the agenda.
Aye.
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 No.
And I will vote yes. It fails. It must be unanimous consent. So that will happen next week at the Public Works. We'll get that information to the, we'll get that information to the Committee of the Whole. We'll have a discussion together about that. The next one would be adding to the agenda the Jack Pine Family Diner LLC. Chair would entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
So.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Any discussion adding that to the agenda? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. So now, we are looking at approving the agenda with the single addition of the Jack Pine Family Diner LLC as the number 12 item. Chair would entertain, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. All right. We had a hard land use in legislation.
This could be a good one.
Dude, this is gonna be a good one. All right, so we'll go to the minutes. We have the minutes of July 17th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to move those forward.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we have the minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we go to approval of payments and claims. We have a resolution before us. This has $1,009.33 going to the general fund, coming from the 812 Lodging Tax Fund. Accounts payable, City of International Falls regular claims, $393,546.2. Airport commission claims, $101,746.89. And capital projects for the airport, $11,025. For a total accounts payable of $506,317.91. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the attention of the council? Hearing none, you'll have an opportunity again at the end of the meeting. We have two items today on our consent agenda. One is to allow the necessary expenses for the administration staff to attend the 23rd Annual Civic Symposium in Wisconsin Dells. That's September 14th and 15th. And the next one would be to approve the expenses for Human Resources Safety Director to attend the Northwest, or I'm sorry, Northeast Regional Safety Day in Duluth. That is September 27th. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Question?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. I'll vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we have our annual audit prepared by Schwinner and Winter and Company. Ryan Schmidt is joining us via Zoom. Ryan, can you give us a rundown of our audit that you showed us last week, two weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how in-depth you want me to go, but basically from a, from a high level, you have a clean opinion again this year. The audit went very smoothly. So the same internal control findings that you've had in the past related to the standard lack of segregation of duties, the assistance we provide with audit adjustments at year-end, and then the fact that we prepare your financials, and then one minor legal compliance finding related to a construction contract. Other than that, nothing out of the ordinary. Even those items are, are quite, quite ordinary. We ran through the financials already as far as the numbers go, so unless there's any detailed questions that you'd like me to run through.
So I, first I'll offer it to the council. Does the council have any questions for Ryan? Okay, I only, I only have one thing, and it's, it's not even against the audit. It's just some clarification that became very real when you went through the audit with us. The city has a, a game plan that we don't go farther than 50% into reserves. And as we've progressed over the last couple of years with the losses that we have from our ambulance, we've always had the assumption that we would be paying that, that funding back to the city because it's a liability against our general fund. In the audit, as you pointed out, if we were to pay those funds back, we are now sitting at a 30%, roughly 30%. And I just, I kinda wanna hear your clarification on that, that of how our city is set up to keep 50% in our general fund and how the ambulance is drawing us down to the point where as we continue losing money every year, we're in a very dangerous point moving forward.
Yeah, you know, I do have my presentation from last time. How would I share my screen and show a few slides from, from the ambulance fund just to help clarify tho, that particular point?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. Oh, actually, it looks like my, my sharing options are disabled currently.
We are fixing that immediately.
Okay. Okay, there we go. All right, just a moment here. Okay, so this is a slide that I showed last time. And it basically shows the history of the cash balance within the ambulance fund. As you can see, over the past five years, it's been on a downward trend. The cash actually is negative, and how this happens is because the, the cash of the city is pooled, you know, across all of the city's funds. So because they share a checking account and, you know, all of the cash is pooled, accounts, certain funds such as the ambulance fund can run negative. And when that happens, it means that you're basically borrowing from the other funds of the city. So the way that we present this in the financial statements, because we can't show negative cash for any individual fund, is we show this as the ambulance fund borrowing from the general fund. So you can see this borrowing has grown over time to the point where the ambulance fund is at a cash deficit of around $1.3 million at the end of 2022. So obviously, this is because revenues are historically coming in below expenditures. We have a little graph here showing that over the past five years as well. So what we have in the financial statements is we have a payable in, in the ambulance fund saying that that ambulance fund is going to be paying that money back to the general fund. So on the general fund side, we have a receivable. Now, if I can, yeah, move that out of the way. Okay. So because there's a receivable on the general fund side, that factors in to our calculation of the general fund's fund balance. And the fund balance for the general fund, you, you have a policy in place to keep that at a minimum of 50% of your annual budgeted operating expenditures. So the ratio that you had, so we have a previous slide showing where this ratio is quite a bit higher, actually. I think at the end of 2022, you're actually currently a little over 50%. So you are in line with your policy. However, if we pull out that receivable, because we say, okay, the ambulance fund can't actually pay back the general fund, if we pull out that receivable, well, then the general fund's fund balance drops down, and now your ratio is no longer in compliance with your policy. So this is the trend of that ratio over the past five years under the assumption that that repayment from the ambulance fund is not actually collectible. Does that help clarify?
Absolutely, it helps clarify. Thank you.
Yep.
And, and just to reiterate, even though we're running at a deficit in the ambulance, we still have the, we still have funds in our reserves to cover those losses. However, well, that's, there's no however. That, that's real. Going to the audit itself, as you said, everything was, was clean and good. There was no, no issues with working with our staff, and we got what is called a clean opinion, and that is what, what we're shooting for, correct?
That's correct. Yep, everything went very smooth. You did get that clean, unmodified opinion again this year.
Okay. All right, with that, if anyone has any questions for, for Ryan? If not, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the audit as prepared.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Any discussion?
I have a couple things.
Please.
First, so we do have, but he just said we have money to keep paying these expenses. But if we're gonna stick with our policy of having 30% in there, we're not gonna have.
Correct.
We keep going this direction, and the reason we have that policy, it's background 27, 07, 08. The governor at the time, Governor Palenti, held back local government aid, and the city wasn't sure how they're gonna operate. So that council at that time decided to have that cushion, and that's what we need. And so to go on, okay, we know what's going on with the ambulance, and it's been going on, as you can see, for, what, four years now, roughly? Well, it's, I just wanted to get, it's time, we gotta quit kicking it down the road and decide what we're gonna do here sooner than later with the ambulance.
And, and I agree. If, if, I'm more than willing to have this as just a discussion point tonight, if we wanna get where we get to the, the mayor council reports.
Yeah.
I would like to have that discussion on, you know, some ways of why we're in the situation that we're in.
And I'm glad, that's a good, I, I just wanted to bring that to everybody and on record to know where we're at, and we can't continue to hopefully go in this direction.
Okay, well, I will, when we get to the reports of the mayor and the council, we'll, we'll have some conversation on that. No action, but just conversation.
Right, yeah. And one more thing, I'd like to compliment him on his shirt.
Just like yours.
Just like mine.
All right, besides that, so we have a motion.
That's really what I wanted to mention. I just wanted to do some official stuff.
I, I missed that. Was that directed towards me?
Yes, I, I'd like to compliment you on your shirt.
Oh, on my shirt?
Exact same shirt.
I got the same shirt on.
Perfect, perfect.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much for everything, and we look forward to having a clean opinion again next year, Ryan. I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Thank you again.
Yep, thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Consider request to hire Samuel Hegi and Twilla Hegi as part of paid-time leave on-call emergency medical technicians. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward.
I move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call, none, call question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Consider the request to hire Michael Fisher as a spare firefighter engineer for the International Falls Fire Department. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that hire.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion?
Is this a vacant position right now?
Chief?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay, I just, I was just curious. I didn't know.
We always have a roster of spare engineers. That's how we cover our vacation and sick leave with our full-time employees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, consider the removal or repair of a hazardous house located at 817 Sixth Street. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that removal or repair.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Can we get a little bit of history on this one?
So this one was brought to me, it was previously owned by a different owner. And she had signed an agreement with the city that she was gonna have a certain period of time to remove all of her personal belongings and everything so that, sorry, the city could tear it down. In the meantime of that, though, she transferred it to this new owner. And the fire marshal, I don't know if he's still here anymore. Yeah, he is, there is, has been working with this new owner for quite a while. And now we have no responses whatsoever, and I believe that there are animals in the house. Like not pets, other animals that need to be dealt with. And we haven't been able to get a new agreement signed with this new owner, so this is our next option.
Okay. So if we had an agreement with, with somebody and then they transfer the title, how, how is that possible?
These are not recorded in land records right away. So the new owner didn't have required notice that this was a potential defect with the property. So I know that it's, it's kind of convoluted and it doesn't make sense a lot of times. But when the prior owner, you have something, the only thing that you can hold against these prior owners when you get a new property is things that are of record, things that you could potentially know about. And this wasn't one of them. So for us to enforce an agreement that she wasn't part of against this new owner would be a due process violation.
However, if someone is selling a said property or transferring a said property, don't you have to give a, aren't you legally mandated to say what is on the property that you know of? Whether there was disclosures?
You're supposed to, you're supposed to do disclosures, yes. This was a quick claim deed, so there was no warranty as to the actual title itself. And a quick claim deed is essentially a deed saying, you can have whatever potential interest I have in this. It's not something that I can go prosecute her for not making that. It would be essentially a civil action that I don't think this person has any interest in suing the person for not disclosing the issue.
Fair enough. I'm just trying to understand how, because we, and, and I'm not looking to sue anybody or anything. It's just, especially from our conversations at land use and legislation today, there's so many nuances of how we get from A to X. You know, we're not even getting to Z because there are so many turns. So I was just curious on that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
How long, this has been going on a long time? And how long does she have to take care of this?
That's a great question.
60 days from the date of personal service. 60 days from the date of personal service.
She's had more than plenty of time.
I understand.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. It's 60 days. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving voting operations technology and election resources. Account agreement between International Falls and Coochin County. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Teddy, you have any background on, on this?
Just a little bit of information and just sharing actually what the Deputy Audit Treasurer, Joan Nelson, sent over. This is new legislation in 2023. They are getting allocation to handle the voting and taking care of the voting equipment. We do have voting equipment that has been purchased through the county funds. All of our equipment is purchased through county, the funds that the county receives. They are maintenance on a, on a regular basis as well through, through the county funds. This is a different, this called, these voter funds are a different pool of money that they're getting now. And this is a requirement that they reach out to each of the entities and ask them if they want those funds or if they're gonna leave them with the county to continue doing these maintenance and other things. And we do have minimal fees when we do an election with our judges, and, you know, very minimal fees. But they do all the maintenance. They have all the supplies. They handle, for the most part, the, they handle the election. Where we assist and we run our three polling places. But they handle the maintenance and the equipment and the machines through their funding they receive. So I would definitely support approving this resolution and leaving this five, I believe it's $500 and some change, 546.97, with the county to continue to administer the election as they have in the past.
Excellent. And this, well, I'll, I'm sure you'll have that in your report about the upcoming election for a county rep. So we'll move on. We have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we have a, a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing solicitation of quotes for the Fifth Avenue West project. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden and an immediate second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion?
Can we hear the?
Yeah, Jason, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this was a project that was petitioned for this spring. We did a feasibility report for it. It was approved in July, first meeting in July. And we had the hearing, public hearing, so the next step is to, you know, approve these plans and get up. We're gonna go for quotes, and hopefully we'll have some bid results to bring back to you guys for the next council meeting. So, so we can move forward with this. It's just paving. It's just pretty straightforward. We did add utility repair that we had to do anyways, so we'll, the city will prepare the location, and we'll just provide the pavement for it, so.
So this just goes out to bid so we can find out how much the project would cost?
Yeah, this goes for quotes, and then we'll bring them back to you guys for approval so that we can move forward with the project if we choose to.
Okay, and then I think for the most part, you're gonna be on the next two, so you might as well just hang out. So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Next, we have approve the solicitation of quotes for Cary Park Parking Lot Project. Please.
Correct. This was, the parking lot was damaged during the flood with, for the sandbagging operation. We worked with FEMA. The county was able to get funding for that to do spot milling overlay, and then, or spot milling, and then we're gonna overlay the entire parking lot.
And then ultimately, this gets covered by the FEMA funds?
Correct. The county's already got the FEMA funds, so now we, this is, that'll cover this project, so.
Okay, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve that solicitation for quotes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller with an immediate second by Councilor Holden.
Okay.
You guys are really on top of it. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes. Motion carries. 5-0. Now, this one is the exciting one. The 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Please.
Yes, we've been working on this plan with the Public Works Committee and with city staff, putting together a plan of what we feel is the needed projects in the community. I don't know how in detail you wanna go. It's broken down by year. It's broken down by department, street, water, sewer, storm sewer.
So like a five, it's a five-year?
It's a five-year plan, yes. And this isn't approving doing- And this isn't approving doing the, the projects, this is just saying that we recognize this as a priority. And then we will, you know, prioritize them out of there and bring them to you guys to, if we wanna proceed with them. But we also do wanna get the discussion going at that, you know, this, if you look at it, it's a pretty expensive price tag to do all these projects. So we want you guys to be aware of what we see the need is in the community.
Can you just give a, a list of how we prioritize the, the different years? Cause I see it's a lot of the oldest streets and they're staggered out between a couple of the years. Specifically, 2028 pushes out a vast majority of those. Just how did we, we come up with the, the timing on those?
Some of them were funding that we recognized that was available. Some of them was priority based on the addressing the INI. Lead service lines was, definitely came into play. And then the street conditions. I know for the immediate, I know the county's doing some projects and we wanna replace the water when they do their road, uh, the road replacements, so that's what drove a lot of the prioritizing.
And then I guess the follow-up question, which is the, the funding piece, how much of this ends up being through the 1% sales tax? How much of this ends up being, you know, monies we have to set aside? How much do we, can we utilize and leverage from the lead pipe replacement that just came in through the state? I mean, what funding sources do we have for these projects?
We have not gone into that detail, so when we present the projects, when we present the projects, we will let you know how we plan on funding each project, so.
And I'm watching our Public Works Chair, come on up, Ted, please. Cause I know you guys look at a lot of the stuff based off of what, what funding we can get. I know that there was a lot of conversation along Ninth Street with that specifically, so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What's, you know, some of the projects like Jason touched on was the county Seventeenth Street. They're gonna redo from Ninth Avenue to Highway fifty-three next, next year. We have two blocks of cast iron pipe. It hasn't given us a lot of issues, but I don't, you know, I was kinda hoping we could've gotten ahead of the county on Second Avenue East. Rebuilding a new road over old utilities, we've gotta get away from that. So Seventeenth Street in our previous capital improvement plans weren't on there. But it's kind, we kind of, I don't wanna say forced, but when they choose to rebuild that road, we need to look at the utilities and the conditions under there to see if they're gonna last twenty years. Okay, if they're gonna start giving us fits in ten years, the county's not getting their lifespan out of the road. So we had to move that up. Another thing is, is that we're looking at an LRIP grant for Ninth Street. Ninth Street right now, we're on the PFA list with the application for lead line and water main replacement. Okay, so that kinda dictates that because we don't have enough money to fund the whole project. So we've gotta be prepared that if we can get funding from one source to do one part, we've gotta be able to fund it ourselves to make sure we can pull it off. Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Eighth Street, we've got new water lines on those streets, but we've got lead lines that run from the curb stand into the house. Okay, a lot of those houses, their sewer laterals are failing. So we applied, we got on the PFA list this year, which is gonna put us out two years, to replace lead lines from the curb stand into the house. Now, part of that is, if the lateral is in the same trench as a lead line, we can get funding to help with that. So as part of the infrastructure bill with lead lines, for the most part, that's a hundred percent covered for the homeowner, cause the homeowner owns the lateral all the way from the main to the house and they own from the curb stand in. So part of that is putting that on there because we're on the list. That money for lead line services is supposed to be here for five years. So you're gonna see us put a lot of emphasis on doing road projects where there's lead so we can try and take advantage of the funding opportunities, so.
So my last piece on this is, the last time that we did our, our game plan, we tried to get the educational piece out, that we were trying to do milling overlays for a vast majority of the city because we knew that the, we had a really good educated guess that the water and the sewer lines underneath were gonna be good. So this one is based off of now, it's gonna be more expensive because we are looking at fixing those water and sewer lines that are underneath. So this is gonna be larger projects as we move forward.
They're, they're not gonna be as big, but they're gonna be way more expensive. This year's a prime example, we're spending three and a half to four million dollars and we're doing ten blocks maybe? Okay, that's full road reconstruction, full utilities. For two million dollars in 2020, we did over ninety blocks of milling overlay and full depth reclaim. So that goes to show that the cost to rebuild the utilities is, you know, it's five or six times as much for, per block.
All right, well, we have a.
Can I just add that normally, the one thing with pushing the capital improvement plan, usually it's a January thing. And the problem is that doing it in January, trying to figure out what you're gonna do, we need to figure out, so I like having this just before budget time. We're not gonna be able to do everything we have on our list for 2024. I'm gonna have some priorities or some recommendations. We're gonna have to pick and choose what we do because the pot's not that big. But we also need to remember, what we don't do this year, which is off to next year. And it just keeps going, but this is a moving, living document that we're gonna, we're gonna tweak every year and we're gonna do as much as we can. And some things that aren't on the list this year may show up in two years because they become a problem.
And I think that that is still one of the things that I learned the most when I first got on, on City Council and we had that, those road assessments of the ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives. And, you know, if, if a road is a one or a two, they're in really good shape, we can probably move forward with those. They're not gonna, nothing we need to do immediately. The threes and the fours need to be addressed, it's relatively cheap to get those up to be serviceable one and twos. The fives are gonna be expensive and if we don't do anything with the threes and fours now, they're gonna be fives and they're gonna be really expensive. Now we're into that expensive piece, but we could've possibly saved ourselves millions and millions of dollars two, three years ago to be able to be where we're at right now, which is fixing some of the worst ones, but it's gonna take time and it's gonna be expensive. All right, well, we have this document before us. Does anyone have any questions for, please, Julie?
Is that, you talked to you about sixty, is that from one end of Sixth Street to the other end?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because how long ago did they put in the stuff?
A lot of good, right, and the work that we're gonna do in Sixth Street as part of the plan right now isn't in the road. It's between the curb and the house. Because a lot of houses still have, we've got copper from the main to the curb stand when they replaced the water lines. But a lot of the homeowners have lead from the curb stand in. And there's funding to cover that a hundred percent for the homeowner by going through this program. So that's what we're doing. That's why we, by October of twenty-four, we need to have our lead line survey done. I was made a liar here two weeks ago. I said we have no galvanized. We have galvanized lines that are downstream of lead, so they'll have to be replaced. And I'd never seen one before since ninety-six. So we need to do a survey of every house in town, every business, to, to determine if they've got lead or not.
How, okay, so then now you went into another question that I have. So with the lead, lead replacement, I know that their lead line replacement, their state money, and it, it benefits the homeowners, it benefits the city to be able to do it all now at once. How much time and, and effort is it gonna be for Public Works to know where? I mean, we can't, we're not gonna be digging any of that up, how are we gonna find out where the dis?
So I actually just applied to the Department of Health. They've got grants out there to help with that.
Correct.
We're in, we're, I was told there was only, at our League of Minnesota Cities, the gentleman that was boring you with lead line talk, I picked up on, the application went out. We're only doing three hundred and fifty applications this year. Betty and I had it sent out before I got to Cotton that day, just to make it, they're gonna, you know, everybody's gonna have the opportunity to get the money, but they were only gonna do three hundred and fifty applications and I wanted to get after it.
Excellent, have we heard anything back on that?
No.
Okay.
The deadline was just the end of July, yeah.
Okay.
I jumped the gun, but I wanted to get in.
They acknowledged they received application.
Yeah.
All right, so at this time, chair would entertain a motion to adopt the Capital Improvement Plan.
So I'll make second.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, second by Councilor Holden. Why don't you two ever get into a race, I don't get it.
I got enough for today, I'm good.
If we have a motion and a second, I'll call the question.
What if I had some discussion?
Oh, please, do you have any discussion?
I do have a question for Ted, are you free eight thirty on Thursday?
What time?
Eight thirty on Thursday.
Well, it's August, isn't it?
It is. If not, I can go handle it myself again on the radio.
I can't put you out for another month, I guess.
Yeah, oh. And I, and I, he said living, breathing, I used the term fluid with these the other day. So, yeah, but it is good to have this plan, it gives us an idea what we need to do.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this document and Ted going on the radio on Thursday. Call the question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero, thank you. Consider a sponsorship to bring Minnesota, or Hockey Day Minnesota to International Falls. I will hand this off to Councilor Kayler.
Yes. Like I said, you did appoint me to the committee and we're in the process now to bring Hockey Day in Minnesota here to make a bid for it. And the plan is to bid for two thousand and twenty-eight. So it's five years out, but there's already a couple formally and some couple just verbally committed. And part of the bidding process is we have to have a hundred thousand dollars available of in-kind or money donated or people will pledge, so it proves that we can put on the event. And I'd just like to say the people that are involved in this, the committee, other than me, are very enthusiastic and really wanna pull this off. And I sent you guys the same thing, we're giving to letters, we're dropping off letters to, as you well know, dropped one off to you and to ask for, we're not, these are advertising opportunities, let's put it that way, that people maybe can come up with, you know, any, it stops at certain amounts, but I'm sure any amount is appreciated. But we do have to have that to make the bid. And just part of it also is, you know, everybody wonders whether facilities, there's talk about Smokey Bear, but we decided really didn't work for all this stuff you gotta have. And that being said, Wal World's doing the same thing, there's gonna be in the middle of their track, it sounds like. So, but I think if we can pull it off, it'd be good for the community for advertising, especially the resorts and the opportunity has us is one day of advertising. You get all over the state of Minnesota, North Dakota, the people watch for advertising and a little history about the town and tell what it's about. And I just thought, you know, what, it's like, it's not International Falls thing. So I've just brought this here, Ted, to see if we may want to be a sponsor in the event of, cause I'm assuming if we do get it, we're gonna, we're gonna need help from our Public Works at the very least. And I thought, you know, in-kind, I'm assuming it's gonna be at least five thousand dollars of Public Works. And then if we decide we wanna do more, this is economic development, maybe some money from there. So we can do it now, or if you guys wanna think about it, we can come back at the next meeting.
I, I think, I think that it makes sense for the city to be involved in it, but I think it's an EDA thing more so than a city council. Especially when you talk about tourism and growth and bringing people in. I, I would have no issue with coming up with a, a idea of what we would have in-kind over, you know, takes, take some time from Public Works to be able to look to see what we would give in-kind, which we do for the Bass Tournament, Icebox Days, all of these other events. And I think that some of our other departments have taken the time to figure out what they're putting into a lot of these other events. And then if there was a financial piece, I think it would make sense to have this moved to the next EDA meeting and now that we've heard about it, start having that conversation, please.
If I may, Councilor Kayler, what is the timeframe in which this committee needs?
We, we plan on wanting to get in September, get the bid out to them. And we won't be having an EDA meeting until, but we can have a special.
Well, let's have a special EDA, let's have a special EDA meeting, get it moving.
If we want.
Get it moving.
So when would, when would a good date be? I mean, they all work for me, I guess.
It all works for me too.
It all works for me too.
How about, how about the net before the next council meeting?
Can I suggest after the next council meeting, due to budget talks before the council meeting that are already scheduled?
Okay, yes, after the next council meeting.
After the August twenty-first council meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move it to there and that's where we'll have the next conversation about it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just wanna say thank you for, for being on that committee. I, I was way over my head not knowing anything about hockey.
Oh, yeah, well, trust me, you don't have to know that much about hockey, but if you can go put your hand out, you know?
All right, next we have an application to use Smokey Bear Park, September seventeenth through the twenty-eighth during PCA's outage and shutdown for the Fun Food Factory. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a license for Super One Liquor, eight thirteen, at its new location. Off-sale liquor and cigarette. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ooh, that was really close. I'm, I'm giving it to Mike, that's my good ear. Councilor Holden for the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, is this to move, are they moving or what?
Yeah, this would be for them to move into the new facility so they can transfer whenever they, they go, correct?
Correct.
Can't take your license with you or what?
No, it goes by a property address.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. We'll go to the reports of the Administrator, Attorney and Department Head, City Administrator.
You have item number twelve first.
Oh, that's right, geez, oh, we went through that at the beginning of the meeting too.
That, that was possibly the longest thing we did, so maybe you thought it was done.
And I pushed right past, cause I saw a discussion of boulevards on the Highway fifty-three corridor. All right, so we have the application license for Jack Pine Family Dinner LLC. This was at our Land Use and Legislation Meeting earlier. The chair would entertain a motion to approve this license.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner, do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. All right, now we'll go to the boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Mayor indicated earlier, tomorrow, there is an election, the primary election is tomorrow. The only thing in our area is the county seat for the west area. I don't know which county. The only thing in our area is the county seat for the west area, I don't know which county seat it is, I apologize. Is it five, District 5, okay.
Yeah, be to replace Wayne Scoey.
Correct, yes, and so that is in the primary due to the number of candidates they have, and it will be narrowed to two, and then those two would be forwarded to the general election in November.
Is, but there's no piece of the city that they represent, correct?
That is correct, no, we don't have any within the city limits that we are handling. There is a polling place on the west at the college that is the only physical polling place for this district, all the others are mail ballots. So, there still will be on Friday canvassing, which we are always involved in. I will be out of town that day, so Lisa will be taking over that spot for me. So she will be canvassing on our behalf as a city representative.
Excellent.
And there will be city involvement, because I will be counting mail-in ballots for.
There you go. And I know our Counselor Bowler is an election judge for that county ward, or that county polling place as well, so we do have city people helping in those areas in different.
Understood.
Places, yes.
So, in the morning till night, tomorrow night.
And on, on the budget piece, just as a reminder, we have set up budget meetings for the next three Mondays, prior to committee and, or the Committee of the Whole, and then the following Monday as well, and then before the, the next council as well. So, you know, we'll send out those reminders, and we will be getting, Brad has just about got all of everybody's requests put together, and at the meeting on, the Committee of the Whole on Monday, Budget Finance Committee of the Whole, you will get your packet of the requests, and each individual department heads will be going through those requests at that time. So we've got a schedule of what that looks like.
Excellent. Anything else?
That's all I have at this time.
Alright, City Attorney?
I have nothing additional.
Okay, Department Heads? Nope. Alright, we'll go to, inside your packet, you have the police report for July, you have the fire rescue EMS report for July. We'll go to the reports of the Mayor, Council Committees, Boards and Commissions. Alright, I have one thing before we have the discussion about the ambulance. I have been asked that Senator Hostchild will be in town on August 16th at noon, and I would like to call a special Committee of the Whole meeting for noon on August 16th to have a discussion with some of the, the things that passed at the state legislature, and specifically on our ambulance. That was one of the big conversations that he and I have been having back and forth, and where the state's at. So I just want to let everyone know that that is a calling for a special committee meeting on August 16th at noon. So then we'll go to the ambulance conversation that, that has been prompted over the course of the last little bit. And to Counselor Kaler's point, this isn't something that we haven't known about, this is something we have been very knowledgeable, that the city is losing funds in our ambulance. This has been an issue more so than the last five years, it just has been more evident, because we're not getting any farther and farther along on trying to fix the problem. The problem is so multifaceted, the first piece of it is, and I gotta be very, very clear, the city of International Falls is running an amazing ambulance service with our paramedics and our EMTs. We have done our best over the course of the last seven years to change the shifts a little bit, to see if we can't save monies. The problem that we have fundamentally is twofold. Number one, we lose money whenever we do a Medicare/Medicaid transfer. If we take folks from International Falls to Duluth or to Fargo, and it is immediately at the beginning of their shift, we are probably not going to lose a lot of money on that, that run. We are gonna lose money, but we're not gonna lose a lot. If we do it later in the day, because it is an emergency and we have to get someone to another hospital, we lose more because of overtime and the cost it takes to have two people run that ambulance to wherever it is that they're going. We can bill whatever our cost is, whatever we charge to Medicare/Medicaid, and we only get, we only receive a finite amount of money, and I don't know if that number is $345, or if it's $400. I don't know what it is, but it is a net loss for the city every single time we run a transfer out of International Falls to another ambulance, or another hospital. So that's the first piece that causes us to be in the problem that we're in. The second piece is, the International Falls ambulance is based out of International Falls. We have 6.6 square miles, and we are by law, from the state of Minnesota, required to service 9,000, 997 square miles. The only people that can cover that loss is our taxing district, which is the residents of International Falls. Our city council, 10 years ago, five years ago, said, you know, we can't, well, it'll come back. At some point, we'll, we'll make this money back, and we, so we have consistently pushed, kicked the can down the road, until five or six years ago, we realized we can't do that. We're not coming back from this. So we started having the conversation with the county, to the county, Rainier and St. Louis County, to help us form a taxing district, so all the areas that we are mandated by law to serve could help pay our losses. We have attempted that over the course of multiple years. This last year, it came as close as we possibly could, where we had meetings with all of the townships, including Cab Togoma, which Cab Togoma also uses ours in St. Louis County, Rainier, St. Louis County and Koochin County, all came to the table, we all looked at it, everyone said that the level of service is what they wanted to keep, but nobody wants to pay for a service that they don't have to. Everything has fallen apart. We have reached out to the state legislature, both Representatives Scarraba and Senator Hostchild on the issues that we have. They have said that there was going to be legislation this year, which would change how the PSAs or the prescribed service area, which is the 997 square miles we have to service, would be distributed, whether we could just charge someone outside the city limits for our service. That did not pass, did not move forward. So, the city is now $1.3 million in the hole on our ambulance servicing the residents of International Falls and the, the greater International Falls area, Koochin County, St. Louis County, Rainier, which use our ambulance. What we learned this last week, as we were going through our audit, is that money is receivable for the city, so at some point, if we get that money in, we have to pay the city back. That's not happening. I did, myself and Counselor Kaler, were in a meeting last week, or the week before, with Representative Scarraba, and his suggestion was to just get it back in our taxes this year. I don't think he completely understands that it's not just the city's loss, it is all of the area. We can't charge more, because we're still not gonna get the money. So the only way we could fix this would be to tax the residents of International Falls. And I don't think that that's right, and I don't think it's fair for the rest of the, the area that uses our, our, our thing, our service. So that's where we're at, that's the conversation, and we are meeting with Senator Hostchild to discuss this ambulance issue. It is my intention to meet with Representative Scarraba on a one-on-one with the city council to handle this issue, but the issue is twofold. It's we are mandated by the state to service areas outside the city limits of International Falls, and when we do so, we lose money from the federal government from running those services. So those are the two things that we're fighting right now, and we, we're struggling, and it may come up in taxes, we, we don't know, but we cannot continue running a deficit to the point where the city does not have money in the bank account to pay our bills. So that, that's the basis, and I'll open it up to the council to have that conversation. But that's where we're at.
I know, what was it, a couple of years ago, we put it as our top priority, each councilman and the mayor, and we gotta get it cleaned up, and, you know, I mean, somehow we gotta figure it out. And if we gotta go back to the table again, I know it gets old after a while, but somehow we gotta get to the table with the Kooch County, and Rainier, and Cab Togoma, and make sure they know how important it is, and I mean, stress importance on it, and we gotta get it taken care of.
But, and, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but the struggle is, the state law says they don't have to do it. That's the problem, I mean, if someone said to you, or said to us, you know, we have, you've been getting the service, you can continue getting the service, or the right thing to do is just pay for the service, because you're using it, are you gonna pay the 1.2 million, or the 250,000 we're leaving, losing a year? I mean, that's the problem we're running into when we're having these conversations, is the state law does not allow us to just say, you're using our service, you have to pay for our service. So that's part one of the problem, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. We need to go back to the table, we need to stress this.
Yeah, and that, and that's fine, I understand that argument, and they, but I don't think they have to propose taxing districts for Little Fork, I don't think they have to propose by law taxing district for the first responder groups. I'm pretty sure they weren't, wasn't state mandated by law to start a taxing district so they could help keep the Little Fork Medical Center open. So, I mean, these are, just as examples that there's, that they have, because they saw the need was there, I don't know if that will influence or not, or have any idea. Otherwise, we are gonna have to start thinking about, you know, I would like a brand-new pickup, but, but I can't afford one, to say, I think our paramedics and our staff do a great job, but it might come to the point that we just can't afford to have two paramedics on all the time. You know, might have to do some type of switching, or an EMT and a paramedic, if that's where, that's way down the road, but these are things that are really coming, and I, it's hard for the state to mandate us where our ambulance has to go if we don't have one.
And, and that's one of the, the conversations that we've had. I mean, what happens if we don't have an ambulance? Because essentially, the state is mandating us to lose money every year. You wouldn't, a business can go out of business. This is, the ambulance is an enterprise fund for the city, it is a money-making venture that we're losing money on every single year, and we have, unless we just literally get out of the business, which according to everything I understand, we're not allowed to do, because you have to sell your PSA to somebody else, the city has looked into that. We're losing two and a half million, or, two, a quarter million dollars a year by running the ambulance. We had a quote from a reputable company that would allow us to sell our ambulance service to them for an annual cost of $1.2 million. We're losing a quarter million, but if we sell our service, it would cost us 1.2. And if it costs the city 1.2, the county still doesn't have to pay, Rainier still doesn't have to pay, because it's still our PSA. Because they won't take the PSA, but they'll service the area on our behalf.
What are the, you said the state mandates it, so we tell them we're just not doing it? What are the ramifications? Are they gonna shut the city down, or?
And, and so the.
That's kind of like telling us where we can go.
A mandate's a mandate, but are you gonna take away government funding, or what are you doing? You're not funding it anyway, so.
So that's one of the things, and we have this conversation. I, I'm, I'm only telling you that it is, we can't do it, but what we actually do, I mean, we, we have had the city administrators reached out and asked the same questions, what happens if we don't provide service? What is the answer?
That we have to, we're, we're mandated by the EMS RB.
So what are they gonna do, break the city down?
Yeah, what did they, yeah, what's the.
I mean, break them down, so the city of High Falls doesn't have any money?
Doesn't matter.
That's.
Doesn't matter, that's what you gotta do.
And, and so that's, that's the rock and a hard place that we're in.
Back when the commissioners lost, so many commissioners at one time there, we had a steering committee going that, we were getting really close to doing something there, Betty, weren't we? We were getting really close to, we had the numbers down, what it would cost each resident of the, of the, of the county that's in our PSA, to have this insurance, or to have this taxing district, it would be similar to what the fire district was, it'd be so much a year, and it'd come out to about a dollar a day. Not even a dollar a day, a dollar a week it was, that.
I thought it was $52, $54 per household.
And then Jason Chobum said that we gotta, we didn't want to have these meetings anymore until we get a full board.
Which put us past the June.
Yeah.
When now we're pushed out another calendar year, where we're gonna lose money again.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's where we were at at that time, and it was, I thought it was going fairly good at that time, and we had representation from Rainier and all over on that board, too.
So, Walt, do you feel it's worth it to give it another try?
Well, I think we continue where we left off.
Continue where we left off.
Betty?
And go on.
Well, the problem is, is that ain't gonna be till November.
Yeah.
Well, which is, and I, I don't think any of us are.
We're past our deadline anyway, right now.
That we're gonna shut anything, or change anything like today or tomorrow, but like with our five-year plan for our streets, that people gotta know these are alternatives and things that could be coming, we're not saying they are, but they very well could be coming. And I'm like you guys, I don't wanna get rid of either one, I want us to work out a solution with everybody, but if it does, like they say, what they gonna do?
It's still the only option they have, and I know we've talked about that, too, and nobody wants it, but go back to basic light support.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of have the advanced light support, and, and that nobody wants, so I mean, that would be a kicker right there to.
And when you say nobody.
With all the entities involved and say, okay, this is the options we're looking at, this is what we gotta do if we're gonna operate this way, and.
And when you say nobody wanted that, that was, that was legitimately from all of the entities that were involved, that wanted to continue having paramedics in the level of service that we have.
Everybody wanted ALS, yes, so, I mean, that's something that we never got that far on, that we ever had to, that we ever had a, a community meeting, or, or, you know, to let all this information out, but we were just still at the point of, of working with it and trying to get the joint commission worked out, so, I mean, that's, I don't think, I think we got, we got halted at the wrong time, because we were moving forward, and I'd like to see it pick back up again, and.
I would, too.
See if we can't get it going again.
Absolutely.
Because we were, we were, we were coming up with, I think, with some good.
Yeah.
Good things.
So, so the only thing that, that I, I will say, and I'm not, I, I won't throw anybody under the bus, but one of the conversations that had came up out of those, those meetings is, if we were to get a taxing district, that would put, take the, the onus off the state of fixing the problem. And that was something that was legitimately said at one of the meetings from somebody that was a decision-maker. that was a decision-maker. And where I struggle with that is, yes, that's accurate, but it doesn't kick the can down the road. It actually can solve a problem, because if the state legislature can't allow us to be able to bill people, we have to be able to come up with a solution that moves forward. And one of the entities had said, we put it, we have, we can't fix this because then the state won't have to. The problem is still with the state, the problem is still with the federal government.
And they're not, they don't appear to be fixing it now.
Fair enough.
How long are we going to kick it down the road until they fix it, then?
And that's my point. I think a taxing district only makes sense, a local taxing district for the groups only makes sense, so I am in 100% support of trying and then still fighting with the, not fighting with the legislature, I don't like to fight. You know, moving-
Of discussions.
Having strong discussions on allowing tax, or districts to be able to tax the entities that are involved, and having the discussion with our federal counterparts on raising the limits on Medicare/Medicaid so that it, it hasn't been raised since 1984 or '05? I mean, it's out of line with what the cost of healthcare is.
Well, another thing is that people got to realize is, the city taxpayers, us, me and the city and everybody in the city, isn't paying for the ambulance service. The ambulance service where we're at now is running on its own. When this taxing district comes into effect, it'll affect all 934 square, square miles of service, including International Falls. So if it's going to be $52 or $60 a year is what it came out to, somewhere in there, it'll be on mine and yours and everybody's, not just, not just the ones outside.
Correct, but I just want to clarify what you just said, though. Right now, all of the onus is on the residents of International Falls.
That's what I mean. It is now because of it not being subsidized or taxed, but we also will be in the taxing district.
Correct, absolutely.
Everybody that's in that 934 miles is going to be in the taxing district.
Well, we have a lot, I mean, we've had a great discussion about this. If, let's have this conversation with Senator Housechild, and I will reach out to Representative Skaraba's office and see if we can't get him to come and meet with the city council so we can have the same conversation with Senator Housechild as we are with Representative Skaraba so they understand truly what our issues are. And then there's going to be some other opportunities for us in the future to have discussions, too, so. But I think that this is a great community narrative that we just need to understand. We have an amazing service, they do an amazing job, we can't continue to fund everything that we're mandated by the state to fund.
You know, you talked about in the audit there, with the level of what we want to keep for cushion, was, is that something in the charter?
It's not in the charter, it's a resolution of the council in the past. So it's not mandated, but it's, it's, as Councilor Kaler had pointed out, when Tim Palenti had cut LGA, they cut every possible project they had. If you actually look back in the, in the old budgets, you were just looking at this for two years. So that's what it is. It's not mandated, but it is-
Smart thinking.
It's smart thinking.
Smart thinking.
Wasn't it 50%, not 30?
Yeah, right. And that's what he's shown us, yes, now we're down to, if we don't count, you know, because those are just numbers on paper right now, right? We don't count those, we count receivable, we're never going to get, yeah, then we're actually at 30%.
We're at 30.
Yeah. Unless we can get receivables. Hey, chief, I'm going to throw you right underneath the bus on this one. How much do we have in receivables right now? Just roughly?
About $550,000.
So if we received everything that we're short, we're still going to be $750,000 short?
The receivables are running at that level since I've been here. They're not moving there yet, receivable. They're uncollectible, that's the issue.
Okay.
So the easiest equation, I think what you're trying to get at here is, of 100% of our budget, we collect about 46% of that. And of that 46%, we're collecting 90% of what is collectible. So our best collectible percentage we can do is probably 48% of the big picture.
Right.
So, in the environment we run in, we are, our collection is pretty good, what is collectible. Problem is, what is collectible as a whole is very-
And a lot of that ultimately comes on the Medicare/Medicaid issue. Because if, if we didn't have a problem with, with, we wouldn't have a problem if servicing outside International Falls, if Medicare/Medicaid were to pay, I mean, that's what the-
As you stated earlier, this is multifaceted, that is a big portion of it, but it also has to do with geography, healthcare system, insurance companies, what's inward, in-network, out-of-network, all kinds of things attributable to the problem. So as you correctly stated in the beginning, this is a big problem with a lot of angles and a lot of fingers at it, so. But I think you are very accurate in saying that the Medicare/Medicaid issue is probably the largest of that problem.
So, we, earlier today, we put a lot on Chelsea, we put a lot on Ted. Can you just fix this one for us, chief?
Sure.
All right. So, again, we're going to have that meeting with Senator Housechild. I will reach out to Representative Skaraba's office and see if we can't have a one-on-one with him as well. Anybody else have anything to bring forward? But I just want to say thank you, that was a great discussion. Go to audience, anyone in the audience? All right.
I just remembered something, too.
I did, too, go.
I just, on a couple of things that are going to be going on that, not necessarily city, but that I'm part of, the Cooching County Warrior Initiative, we're getting together a veterans fishing trip on either the 29th or 30th of August to, depending on weather, going to be from 9:00 to 1:00, starting from Thunderbird, and come back and have lunch, and if people are interested, they can stop by the Veterans Lodge when it's open to sign up, recall the Vets Office. And then the elk sprout and corn feed is going to be a week from Friday, so if people want to go to there, that's how we raise money for scholarships. For the kids, going to have a street dance till midnight and some other things. I'd probably not be at that because it's like 8:00 o'clock at night, and that's getting late for the old man. And the Cooching County Food Access is having their burger battle around the county, which the library is part of. You go and have a burger, get your car punched, and you get it thrown in for drying and maybe make some money for the food access, and you can pick those up there.
Excellent. I have one thing, HRA, did we, were we able to set a date and time yet?
No, she was going to contact me after their August meeting to set something up.
Okay.
Should be coming shortly.
And two, two things, same conversation. I did go to the Coalition of Minnesota Cities in Rochester, or in Thief River Falls, and I was able to meet with the housing commissioner for Minnesota. We went down and found a whole bunch of projects that we are eligible for. They did confirm to me exactly what we had thought about having an HRA, would have to submit some of the paperwork, but there are programs that the city or, the city or contractors are able to go in for. There is a public housing programs, the HRA has to do those projects. Workforce housing, the city can do all of the applicants or applications, and then we can do that through our HRA or our EDA as well. There's a housing development ownership, which can be filled out by the city or contractors. There's a housing trust fund, which would maybe benefit the city through the EDA. We could set monies aside through our EDA to be matched by the state to build new housing in the, in the community. There is a, there is a, so that is the first piece. The second piece is, a couple of weeks ago, we were able to meet with, or we were able to pass a letter of support for slab town properties. I had dinner with them, him and his wife, last week. He has applied for four of these programs through the state. He is looking at doing some multiple projects in the area. He has ran into a lot of the same problems that we have as we talk about housing in our community. I would be more than willing to share some of those conversations at our Committee of the Whole meeting, but he is, he has already invested into one building in town, and he's looking at investing into some others. So we have that going for us as well.
So I'm just going through the HRA meeting minutes, and it says, they're not going to meet with us anymore. They're getting legal counsel. Right here. What you brought up there, I don't know how we're-
Or until they go.
They're all done.
Right, that was the last, but then they had met with Isaac, and then Isaac, you know, actually talked them into possibly meeting with us again, understanding, trying to help them understand that, you know, they have the resources available to them as our HRA for the city, and we're not after their funding for the woodland department part, you know, that part of it. We're looking for them to utilize and access the resources available to an HRA. And so Kim did say that that was going to be a topic at their August meeting, and she would get back to me about a meet, a date to meet. So we'll-
Through council? She'll get back to you through council? That's what it says here?
Yes. So, we'll see, all that goes.
So they point that out to you.
Government's weird. All right, in your packet, you have correspondence from the HRA meeting minutes, and a thank you letter from Citizens for BACASAB. Our next council meeting will be Monday, August 21st. Next week, we do have a budget and finance meeting before our Committee of the Whole. This meeting is adjourned.